Kevin Gray is not here, Mark Nakarado is vacant, Rick Schoenhardt not here, Charlie Stevenson here, John Stewart not here, Rita Bond is not here, John Carroll and Tony Draplick. I'd sure like to appoint John in the absence of the, well, to fill the vacancy we have on the committee, and Tony Draplick to fill in the absence of Rick Schoenhardt this evening. Everyone participates in a discussion and vote, if there is one. We have a couple of items on the agenda, discussion and possible vote, these are informal discussions. Grove Properties is the first one. Is there someone here representing that project? Would you like to step forward?
Oh, sure.
Sure. Begin your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Matt Whitmer from Phase Zero Design. I'm just going to actually mention a couple of brief words, and then I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Chris Mullard, also from our office, who will walk you through the projects. Really, our intentions were to come informally tonight to present some, really some concept designs of what we're looking at for some, what we think are some very important buildings in downtown Simsbury. Grove Properties owns these buildings, you know, they've done some work recently in the town. Their thoughts on these structures are really to look at providing some improvements, both from a marketability standpoint, but also to help to bring back some of the character of these buildings, based on some of their historical aspects. So, we're certainly happy to be able to present these to you, and certainly it'd be nice to get your feedback. Again, this is a very informal kind of a first pass, we're going to show you some elevations, but we would certainly welcome the opportunity with your feedback to come back again for the complete presentation.
Before you say any more, I'd like to just congratulate you on, or thank you for taking advantage of the informal, that's important to us, to come in at a conceptual stage. So, it's, we appreciate this very much, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. I will also mention too, Stephen Walker from Grove Properties wanted to be here very much, but he's actually presenting on Martha's Vineyard tonight. I guess given the choice, like, you know, but anyway, he did want to express his belief in not being here.
My name is Chris Mullard, Phase Zero Design. I brought along a couple of small copies of basically the presentation, just to allow you to share and kind of thumb through as I'm presenting. Plus, these are a lot easier to read, some of the notes on here than they are on the larger boards. I only brought four, so. Basically, there's a three separate properties, or three separate buildings technically that we were looking at for Grove Properties. The very first one is pretty much directly across the street from here, which is the existing Subway, Metro Beast restaurant. Stephen Walker from Grove Properties approached us, and right now, this Metro Beast, he was kind of asking for us to kind of present some type of storefront to the building. As you can see, this image over here on the far left is their main entrance door, which is kind of tucked around the corner, buried in the back, a lot of people, as you're driving by, can't really see how to get into that space. So, Stephen Walker is looking to, you know, kind of elaborate on the front entrance. As you can see here, we've added basically a front entry door with three side lights next to it, some transoms, even added a fabric on it. And then, the signage would pretty much remain as it is. The signage will probably add in some exterior light fixtures to dress up the sign, would even add in a couple sconce wall lights, again, just to kind of indicate that that's the entrance into the space for the restaurant. There's also a little bit of a sign on this parapet, which basically, this whole new signage above the fabric bonding would kind of incorporate their signage. In doing so, we would need to modify the sidewalk a little bit, because right now, this sidewalk is about six inches below the finished floor. So, we'd have to raise that up a little, and just elaborate more on the ramp that's already here, either extend it out, or just make sure it meets the proper pitch for handicap accessibility. The, pretty much, the rest of the building would remain as is, siding we would match to keep the same siding color, finish, material, as we do any demolition work or modifications to the building. So, we're not really looking to change finishes, it's really just adding in this new storefront entry. Would you like me to go through all three properties first, and then maybe we can go back to...
We can give you kind of an immediate reaction.
Sure.
If the railing goes all the way around, and so, that other door is gone, I take it? The side door?
Yeah, the side door. We were thinking about either replacing it with maybe a decorative glass panel. I'm not sure if I want to infill it, I guess it's not really necessary anymore, so it would be eliminated as a door function.
And that's where the stairs would be?
Exactly.
Okay, just...
So, this, I just want to clarify, so you would still have to walk up the stairs to get into the building, to get into the restaurant?
Or use the ramp, which is right in front.
There's a ramp, oh, the ramp's in the front, okay, that's good.
As far as developing kind of the site layout, you know, we're still preliminary on that, you know, and one of the thoughts too, was adding maybe a stair right in front of the entry door.
That's what I was wondering about, yeah.
So, we haven't really developed the site, I guess, at this point, we're more thinking of the building facade and the design aspects of that.
Yeah. I think it's an improvement, from my standpoint. I think the idea of getting more prominence to that restaurant, which is a good idea.
They deserve it.
They deserve it, is right. And I think they, I think you're going in the right direction in a lot of respects. I think that particular building has so much going on in all different parts of it, it's not particularly, it's not historic, really, that I think you have that flexibility to introduce other things that could work there. I like the awnings, I like the doors and glass.
And at next door, at Subway, there's no change whatsoever?
No, no, we're not touching that specifically.
Have you, have you looked at the facade of this building in terms of what you have on the left-hand side, which is relatively large in terms of glass area and size? And then you have the original bay window operation on the right-hand side. It seems to be imbalanced. And have you looked at that, making some adjustment to? It's, to me, it's a little bit out of context.
You're speaking specifically of just these two bays over here?
Well, because again, you've got, you're starting out with a symmetrical gable, bay window, et cetera, the way it is now, notwithstanding the use and the problems that you have. Now, you're going to add roughly twice as much square footage of glass on the left-hand side, and it's imbalanced.
You mean to change the Subway window?
Yeah, basically, I would consider looking at that.
When presented with this idea of making a modification, I believe the intent is to almost make Metro Beast feel as if it's their own element. You know, Subway obviously is just a sandwich place, and Metro Beast is a restaurant, so we wanted to give a little bit of identity to the restaurant, and almost make the front entry feel as if you understand just by looking at that facade that you know it's a restaurant versus, you know, looking at just the bay window, honestly, a bay window could really be a restaurant, retail, anything, but, you know, I think as soon as you see the awnings, the signage, and the storefront, you know, kind of screams restaurant. So, I do understand that it is unbalanced, but I believe that was our intent. Subway has, you know, kind of their own entrance too on the right side, which, you know, I guess that's the focal point for Subway, and we're making this space the focal point for Metro Beast.
Well, I don't argue that at all, I think, you know, I think that's the right track, obviously, I think, for Metro Beast. It doesn't fit as far, you know, to me, it doesn't fit from a design standpoint.
Let me ask the board, is the asymmetry something that is disturbing you?
I speak to that. No, properly handled, it's not, in my opinion. What my question to you would be, did you think about coordinating in some way or fashion the fenestration along the north facade, the long north facade, in terms of its stylistic approach to what you were doing on the front of the building? So that as you would have viewed that, I'm trying to picture viewing Metro Beast 45-degree angle on, so you're seeing both facades. Would there be, would, did you, did you think through that, and if so, what were your thoughts on that?
Right now, I'd have to say that we haven't elaborated on that facade. I think, you know, some of the things I mentioned about this entry door that's there now as existing, you know, that was kind of an extent of how we thought about that.
Were you thinking of the muntin pattern?
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, it's, it is, stylistically, it is two very different characters, one from the Hot Meadows Street side, the one that you have elevated there, and the long elevation along the rest of the parking lot. And I'm not making a judgment in terms of which is the better style approach, I'm just wondering if it would somehow quiet it down and perhaps relax John's concerns a little bit, if somehow they seem to be tied together. I mean, whether, for instance, whether the entrance door was a more ornate door of some kind, and flanked by, or with, to one side, other fenestration, which somehow either mimicked what was on the north side, or if you didn't like what's on the north side, to modify that, somehow to tie them together, that's all.
I think, I mean, one answer may be, looking ahead to your presentation on the next building to the right, where you have a change in the facade treatments there, where, as the whole development exists now, it's a series of bay windows there. If you go through with the proposal for the next building, you're eliminating the bay windows there, leaving this as the only one. So, maybe you should change this one, this last one, to match the next building over.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
Well, that's a good point, I mean, when you look at that, you're actually, in reality, you're looking at the whole facade of that.
Yeah, we really should be looking at these buildings together.
Yeah, they should be viewed together, so, maybe, why don't you run through the rest of the...
Are there actually two, I assume this is glass top to bottom?
Right here? Yeah, it's, I believe it was a seven-foot glass, well, these would be side lights and then transoms above that.
So, just one of them is a door then?
That's correct.
Okay. Any thoughts of, you know, on the Starbucks, for example, glass doesn't go all the way to the ground, there's a panel at the bottom?
Yeah.
Whether breaking that up, would you have any help at all, in terms of awarding those looks or not, I don't know? But that would certainly allow somebody to tell the difference between the doors.
Thank you.
If that's all you have?
Yeah, it might help the identification of which one is the active one. Yeah, why don't you go through maybe all of them at the Simsbury Town Shops, and then we can come back again.
So, the second one is also the Simsbury Shops, I believe it's where the Sarah Barnes shops are right now. Right now, there's basically these four bay windows at the front. The intent is to replace those windows with new, new bay windows, I shouldn't say bay windows, but new storefront windows, basically to match the rest of the building to the left of it. You can kind of see it in this top right picture, this building on the left, or the left side of that image, has basically a full, one large piece of glass, and then it's broken up into several side lights adjacent to that. So, our intent is just to kind of keep that same window styling across the front of the building. And as you view this building from the street, this basically is the center portion of the building, it's kind of the nucleus, I guess, if you will, where basically all the additions started to happen. So, our thought is to accent this building a little differently by adding in some paneling underneath these large windows, just to kind of draw focus to this one center building that has the coupelet, has the main entry door. In addition to the windows, we're also planning on replacing the front entry door. Right now, that door is wood and well-worn. Basically, we're intending to replace it with a door that looks very similar, but then adding in some additional trim work around the door, just again, to dress it up, make it appear more as a front entrance door. We're also adding a signage band at the top of that, just to give this building its own identity. In addition to the front of this facade, there's also kind of this side piece that I believe is part of the same workshop, where we're also replacing more windows, again, to match the rest of the building, so again, it appears more as a whole.
Why not carry it all the way across?
Yes.
You know, I, if I may, I mean, the one thing about building across the street, which I appreciate, is it is separate buildings. And, you know, this is the old barn, and, you know, at some point, someone came back and decided this was a reasonable change to make in adding these windows, and I think bringing them along makes sense in some ways, but as you view the building, and the building begins to recede as it makes the, that interior courtyard, it also changes in shape quite a bit. So, I actually appreciate that there's some eclectic entrances and different features to it as you get closer to the Starbucks end, so, I don't know, I, you know, I think ultimately we'll probably see that last bay, which is now a remnant at Subway's, be removed. But I don't, I don't think this building wants kind of a strip band that somehow brings all these pieces together, I think they sort of need to read as separately, so I guess in some ways, I kind of appreciate that what's going on at the end with Metro Beast, rather than just continuing there.
Well, I'm not suggesting exactly, but go back and look at the entrance to Metro Beast, and it's all glass. And to me, it doesn't have a whole lot of character. Here, you've given some treatment, expanded the glass, but it still has a relationship to the rest of the building and the buildings in the Simsbury Town Shops. I don't want to flog this, but I didn't mean, you know, you should, you know, cookie cutter it, on the other hand, you might want to think about, instead of, you know, four big pieces of glass, something like what you've done there, not necessarily copy it, but...
I just would comment, or my comments on it would be that, first of all, I think, just focusing on this element, which I agree with, is the center of the whole complex, I think you did a very nice job with it. You know, I think it does a great deal to accentuate the entrance, to enhance the entrance, to sort of tie its style together. And I also would come back to your earlier comments, sir, that having, I think it's important to have different identities, and that these buildings can have different identities, so that Metro Beast can clearly, should and wants to stand out as nearly feeling like a separate building or a separate entity over there. So that I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to see this theme carried beyond what you've done, I think, with this particular building. So, nicely done.
Yeah. My only comment, I think it's nicely done too in Metro Beast, it's just the bay window at Subway that sort of stands out as old. And remove it, if you, you know, if you don't need light, or put something else in there.
Just one other comment on the, again, on this one, in looking at the muntin pattern you have on your doors, did you consider doing a vertical muntin on those side lights?
You're talking about on the side of these doors?
Not on the doors, on the windows. In other words...
Oh, vertical here?
Right. I mean, it's kind of a horizontal, I know when, there's something about the scale and detail of those original buildings, I can see why you want to replace them, but by coming up with this concept, it's almost like the windows are almost a...
It's only shown a little bit, but there's an existing...
I know, I remember when that was introduced by Mr. Walker.
That fits up at that pattern.
Right.
Yeah, we just have the same detailing as the...
And I'm just saying, for me, it's always been a slight disconnect, because it introduced more of a horizontal line to the, rather than the original smaller detail. That would be, I think, more consistent with the muntin pattern and the...
Yeah, I like that too.
Doors and transom, I think it'd be a nicer detail for you. It's almost like blinds on the side of the window, that could be closed, but, you know, so visually, it's okay that you have all that glass in the picture window, but that the, those side lights, whether they're active or inactive, I think with a vertical muntin, I think it'd be a little bit, to me anyway, more pleasant.
You know, you're saying you have muntin more in keeping with the pattern on the doors?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's, okay.
Yeah. So, there'd be one vertical muntin bar in each of the, those large windows that are on either side of them, where you have just the horizontal muntin bars.
Well, I can come back and support what was said about the bay at Subway, breaking up the continuation of, and doing something different there. I support that idea. I just never, I just never thought those bay windows were really particularly well-done, well-designed. So, glad to see all those bay windows go throughout, but I think the idea of that, of still doing something different at the Subway, I think makes good sense.
Yeah, I agree.
I'd have to concur with that also. I like the idea of Metro Beast being its own entity, and having a different kind of fenestration or doorway, whatever.
The only thing, I'm just going back to Charlie's comment, whether you had thought about, again, putting muntin bars and a transom glass only there, because you've done it in your other transom, you know, keep the glass in the doors and fix lights, but...
So, you'd have a little transom at the restaurant?
At the restaurant, yeah, whether that makes sense. Just have vertical muntin bars going across.
Okay. I'll get to the third property.
Can I just ask one more question? Just as an aside, really, but is there any thoughts, if you have a doorway there, at some point extending it out at all, so that it be outdoor seating, or opening the doors during warmer season?
We had thought about that, it's a very narrow area right now, there's just, there's a, I think, a four, five-foot sidewalk, and then maybe like a three-foot area for plantings. So, if we extended it out, you'd probably only have that three-foot area for seating, which...
So, it's way too narrow then?
Yeah.
I still think it's a great idea, a little bistro table or two, but just, you know...
You can't do it, the space is tight.
There's even a great little bar right inside there that nobody uses, you know, I mean, I just think...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before you leave the page, there are two signs above, look on the photograph on the upper right, there are signs above each of the double bays. Those go away then?
Those would actually stay.
So, they're not shown on your drawing, so you'd have, they would stay above those windows you're putting in?
Yeah, we would keep them centered on both of these picture windows.
With lights?
Correct.
Okay.
And the third property is the Cannon Building. Basically, we were asked by Stephen Walker to add a entry facade to the side of this building, because right now, there's a vacant space, and he's looking to lease it, and he wants to be able to, basically build an entrance on there. Right now, it kind of feels like a side entrance, so he's looking for, you know, potential tenant, possibly retail, where we can, you know, kind of give it its own entity again, but then, at the same time, we don't want to compromise the existing appearance of the building. So, as we started to approach this, we felt that kind of the right approach was to add, basically, a small addition to the building, roughly 400 square feet, which kind of covers the patio that's there now. In doing so, we can kind of play with this front facade a little bit by adding in, basically, our own fenestration, even though we're kind of keeping the same appearance, we've added in a brick base that matches, that would have brick, obviously, to match the rest of the building. But then above it, we would have windows that matched the same window styling, but instead of being in a brick facade, it would basically be pretty much cased by trim on all sides, we have the pilasters in the corner, pilasters adjacent to the doors on each side, just to kind of almost give this addition a feel as a sunroom to some degree. And then, along the top of this space, we've tried to mimic some of the banding, or a parapet facade that's on the adjacent end of the building over the, it's the portico. And by doing that banding, we've also allowed ourselves some space to put some signage on the building. In front of that, we're planning on, you know, doing some site work to modify the existing stair that's there, it would be a brand-new concrete stair. We'd also need to provide a handicap-accessible ramp, which we plan to, you know, basically tuck behind the stair, to hide it, basically, from the street. And then, you can see, basically, the street facade, we've pretty much just kept the same detailing as we did as the parking lot facade that faces the CBS parking lot.
And the stair goes right down into the parking lot, then?
I believe there's actually more sidewalk in front of the stairs.
Yeah.
So, we would, you know, need to make that handicap accessible, so you can, you know, roll up from the parking lot and then enter into the handicap ramp.
Yeah. This, of course, is one of the landmark buildings that, you know, in Town Center, the Darling House, and, you know, because of that, I think there's some pretty tight restrictions. I'd want to look back in the code, the current form-based code that's in Town Center, but, I mean, my first reaction is that I think you've been very respectful of the original building, in a lot of ways, in sort of borrowing and creating a form that looks as though it could have been part of the original, I think. That idea of a sun porch on a southern exposure is a good idea.
Just, it's just a point of curiosity, the circulation of the building, that was, because that is an entry that goes into, as I recall, goes in straight into a laboratory area currently.
That's correct.
And then from there, you can get back into the rest of the building, I'm just, what happens? Is this, is, will this all be brand-new rental space, or there will be a through corridor as you go in, or?
I believe it's the intent at this addition, and I want to say, is it the first two bays?
Yeah, the former waiting room and the...
And then there's a waiting room that's right...
Blood dry area, yeah, which would become part of it.
That would all become part of one tenant.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, I don't think there would be a corridor that goes through, it'd be one space.
I agree with the chairman's comments on the respectful approach to the building, it's a nice start.
It looks like there was an addition put on the east side of that house, it's in your drawing.
That's right, this space here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
There's, it's like there's a baluster of some sort on the top.
Yeah, I can see a little bit in this image, basically, on the right side, this is detailed differently than the rest of the building. If I remember right, I want to say this was like a precast concrete material.
That must have been an addition to that, after the... That must have been an addition to the, after the original.
Could I, could I touch you that left-hand photo? Is that the north side of the building or the east side?
Yes, that's the north side.
It is the north.
It's basically in this area.
It's over there, okay.
It just wasn't drawn in the elevation.
So how does that portico relate to the new structure? Are you, is it going to be the similar architecture or different?
Yeah, basically, what we took from this is the keys from the existing facade, parapet on that, and we're trying to incorporate some of the same detailing on the facade around the parapet of our building.
Yeah, we'll draw that in when we come back.
Okay, I just, yeah, I wondered if one had, you know...
That was hard to draw.
To similar structures.
Yeah.
Very helpful having the presentation show the existing pictures along with your proposal. That's very helpful to us.
That is good.
Any other comments? Rick?
Like it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Cannon Building will still be the Cannon Building.
Was there any, the only thing would be, had you thought about a canopy over the entrance of some sort, or recessed the entrance, or is there some weather protection, or... That isn't consistent with the front entrance on the building, but, so you might be introducing something new. That was the only thing, whether...
I think if we added a canopy, it would, it would take away from the residential appearance of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I meant either recessing the door so that you could, you had some protection there. Yeah, okay. Is that it?
That's all?
Yeah, I, any other comments on this? From what, I think you heard, you made some good choices and good start on this, and what we try to do is just give you, without coming to a consensus on all of them, but just give you the ideas that, or concerns that each one of us had, you know, in terms of whether the Metro Beast fits or it doesn't fit, or... So you really have a number of comments that, that we're all able to contribute, you know, at this stage. So you probably have a sense of what you want to do certainly, and any changes you might want to make on that when you come back again, but...
What are the, since that is a historical building, what are the requirements for them?
That's something I want to check. I wasn't sure where, we didn't get any advance information on this, so we could check it out, but I think we want to go into the form-based code and look at what the limitations are. And I'm sure you've looked at the book too. Yeah. Okay. Irem, any comments?
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Very good. Even though I've been in the city for years, it's always, I have to find it, where's the order of Metro Beast? Of course, parking's not very good on that side.
Richard's not here yet, I guess. I saw him out in the corridor a little time ago. Irem, do you want to talk about the Villages District first and then...
Just basically, that we met, many met with the Villages District consultant last week.
Yeah.
And talked to them about the area. We're going to try to focus, I think we're trying to get them to focus on the We Talk area for the Villages District study. Originally, we had talked about perhaps trying to do two or three different areas, but with the amount of money and the level of detail that we want out of them, I think we finally decided that, really, they need to focus on one area to do a good job on that. Develop a regulation, develop a plan, along with some graphics, some connections to the current design guidelines. So that what we're hoping is that, and they took a trip in the field afterwards, we're focusing on the area from just where 185 comes across the river up to, basically, Powder Forest Drive, that area right there. So we're hopeful that within the next week or so, we can get that information to them, get them a list of the stakeholders that will be involved, set up a first stakeholder meeting, and then start those discussions. Should move along pretty quickly, shouldn't be any great difficult thing to do. We'd like to keep everybody informed as to what's going on as things begin to evolve. So that's the area that we're looking at. They're working under the existing state statute for village districts, and we're hopeful that we'll get some good amount of detail out of it as part of this process. I think it was very helpful in terms of instructing them as to what we were looking for. I think initially, they thought, I don't know what they thought in terms of detail, but I think we have pretty well focused now on one specific area. So originally, I think they were concerned that we had to look at several different areas and try to figure out where the boundaries were at all. I think that in this area, it's pretty clear where the boundaries are, and it should be, should be something that should move along pretty well. So we're hoping it'll turn out really well.
Yeah, we'd ask them to consider what their organizing principles are going to be, you know, is it building by building type, by frontage type, street type like Town Center, which is unlikely, but, so I think it may be by frontage type. So the idea is to come out of all this whole process with a form-based-like code for that area. And so it'll be run like a mini charrette process, so there will be stakeholders invited in, they will be making public presentations on it, so...
It's interesting, because about a quarter of that is an auto dealership.
It is. And I think that, I think what they're probably be looking for is input in terms of what that prep's ought to be in the future, and that'll be very helpful. It's a good amount of property, no question about that. So whether that stays there for long-term or not is a question, but as things begin to fill in around it, it'll be a long-term plan, obviously. But if we set a district in place now, it's a good time to deal with it.
Yeah, one of the reasons I think We Talk was selected was that it's a little bit nebulous in terms of what it is. Not quite sure what it wants to be there, and I think the idea of establishing a place there. Irem showed them the Route 10 study, which had this small green between Stratton Forest Road and Canal there, that came out of the Route 10 corridor study. That was an idea that they might advance or they might not, but, so I think it's going to be, I think it's a good team that they have, and they have different people. I guess John Ford, I think his name is, he was, he was part of the low-impact study.
Right, he's an engineer.
He's an engineer.
He's, you know, basically gets the idea that stormwater is important, no matter what you do, you're going to put the building closer together, you got to deal with stormwater.
He's a thoughtful engineer, I think.
He is. He is, actually. And Russ Preston is, I think, a thoughtful architect too.
Yeah.
And the team is, that's why they, I think they got it.
Yeah.
And Russ did the architecture for the low-impact development study as well. I thought, did a nice job on that as well. So he, again, he gets it, he understands what we're looking for, the level of detail. He was a little concerned that we were looking for too much detail, but I think we've got him to the point where he's comfortable with that.
Well, that's the nice thing about the form-based, you can make it as detailed or not, as you like, and that's the great flexibility you have with that type of regulation, I think. And he'll introduce a lot of graphics as part of his code, which is great. I think it's just easier to follow, so...
So we're hopeful that that'll move right along, and we're looking forward to getting that coming, please. Can I catch up with Richard?
Yep, he's out there right now. The next item is the community center, senior center, town engineer Rich Switzke is presenting that.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi. How are you? Great, well, thank you. Thank you. See if the wax pieces of paper... I'm going to just follow along on this a little bit. This was actually a letter, a recommendation to the board of selectmen from the Public Building Committee regarding some recommendations on the senior community center study. The board assigned that task to the Public Building back in 2010, and they were specifically looking at Eno Memorial Hall as it relates to a community senior center. And it also included looking at other sites, conducting some citizen participation and informational meetings. They interviewed architects, and they did select Queensberry Archery to conduct that study. We have a rather long report, which is available in my office, if anyone would like it, it's also on our website, Town website, under Social Services Senior Center. The full document is in there. Basically, what was looked at was in a very comprehensive manner, were some of the population trends, an estimation of folks that might be using a senior community center over the next 20 years. The end result of that, which also included looking at programs that exist, planned programs, space requirements, and so forth, and we ended up with a need for about 22,200 pro-square feet to accommodate the programs over the next 20 to 30 years. Now, Eno Memorial Hall has about 22,500 pro-square feet, nearly 13,000 of that square feet. Square footage is reserved for the DAR, the Simsbury Community Television, and historically significant spaces such as the auditoriums, the public areas, such as the rotundo, and so forth. So we probably would need an additional 12,500 square feet approximately on that building to accommodate the anticipated programs. And we also believe we would need a parking deck at the back of that building to accommodate parking requirements. In conjunction with the study, we had a lot of dedicated folks, a lot of dedicated seniors and staff members, as well as Public Building Committee members, that went on some field tours. They did visit centers in Agawam, Massachusetts, Lebanon, Connecticut, Enfield, Connecticut, Glastonbury, and based on those observations, they decided that the Agawam Center was a good baseline facility. They also looked at a total of, or considered, 12 other sites in Simsbury, and then they ended up evaluating six sites, and some detail is indicated on page two. They also did some written polls at two public presentation meetings. As you can see, there's not exactly an overwhelming universal response to any one site, but what was quite clear, if you look at Eno Memorial, renovate as is, Eno Memorial renovate with an addition, Performing Arts Center site and other sites in the Town Center, there is a very strong opinion that this facility ought to stay in the center of Simsbury. After reviewing rather extensive site evaluations, preparing schematic plans, preliminary costs, and so forth, as well as considering the comments from their informational meetings, the Public Building Committee recommended the board of selectmen consider two locations for a senior community center with a possible third site. Their two firm recommendations were Eno Memorial and the new building of Bushy Hill Stratton. And the third consideration, which came up in the midst of the study, but because of a lot of factors, they didn't look at it at as much detail, which is to put an addition on the present Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Page three, we have some cost breakdowns. It's kind of interesting, when you look at the basic building site costs, the numbers are all pretty comparable. They're all in that mid-five-and-a-half million range. However, if you did put a parking deck on Eno, that does drive the costs up. Without a parking deck, Eno Memorial is the most favorable cost. Then we also added in our soft costs. You folks are all pretty familiar with that, but it's amazing how a lot of people get very confused about what a building costs and what a project costs. There's quite a variation. There's also a lot of flexibility on the total project costs, as you probably well know. Those soft costs include architecture and engineering, testing, project management, legal bonding, and there's a lot of things where you can make adjustments, furniture and fixtures, you can reuse things, telecommunications and data, you know, you can be all over the place, so those numbers can certainly be adjusted. My hope would be that if this project goes forward, we get our total project cost down around six million, that would be kind of a target that I think is doable. Just in terms of the sites we looked at, Eno Memorial obviously has a lot of advantages, first and foremost. It's located in the Town Center, and to keep our community facilities in the center was one of the keystones in the Center Charrette Study. And certainly, it is the historic traditional location for the senior community center in Simsbury, and it does have considerable infrastructure in place. I would say the main consideration, considerations that need to be considered there, of course, is the parking and the access, as well as respecting the historic nature of that building. If you really started to chop up a lot of space in that building, we got plenty of space, but the historic nature of the building, the really impressive presentation when you go inside, really dictates you ought to be leaving along the big rooms, you ought to be leaving along the auditorium. But we do think it has a lot of potential, especially with the deck. And again, as I indicated before, the Eno building costs are the most economical when you don't consider the deck. The Bushy Hill Stratton Brook site is, again, is a raw site, certainly, you know, is the most efficient in terms of flexibility of design and ease of construction, however, it obviously does not meet the important criteria of being in or near the center, although, interestingly enough, it is near the center of the population, if you started doing a population study. However, the utility infrastructure is not all in sight, it is nearby, but sewers and things would have to be brought in, and obviously, it would involve clearing a lot of property. And while it's not directly in the downhill, downgradient portion of the aquifer protection area, it certainly is very near the park, to those of the large production malls on Stratton Brook Road. As I mentioned before, we did not refine the Performing Arts Center because we really did not engage the existing site users, being all the various sports and athletic leagues, the Performing Arts Center operations themselves, the models playing around the dog park. It's a very interesting site, and if you talk to folks that are involved in senior centers and senior folk activities, there's a lot of pluses when you start doing multi-generational activities and mixing different age groups together. However, if you all go down there, like yesterday, when it was a stellar day, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of people down there. That by itself could create some issues on getting senior program attendees in and out of there. It could cause certainly the need to share the place. We're not going to be able to have a three-day soccer tournament on the same days where there's a bunch of senior activities. Right now, if we look at the Performing Arts Center agenda for this upcoming year, it looks like they're going to have a very active season, and so there's a lot of potential conflict about sharing, a lot of discussion of how that sharing would work. But it does have that interesting aspect of shared age groups, and it's interesting that there could be some shared space. The Performing Arts Center has been looking for permanent bathrooms and activity rooms, a green room, all of that stuff could be shared with the senior center. Where we're at right now is coming before your board, as well as the Planning Commission, looking for your thoughts. We will have some formal presentations of the board of selectmen, as well as a formal public informational meeting to get additional senior input, resident input, as well as senior input. And the board of selectmen, of course, will have the difficult task of selecting a lot of these sites, and hopefully, we can achieve that by July. That would be my hope.
So you're looking for the board's selectmen decision by July?
Yes, I'm a very optimistic person.
The Bushy Hill, that was, they were going to put the library there at one time?
No, believe it or not, the Bushy Hill Stratton site was acquired for a school.
School.
Interestingly enough, it was actually use restricted for a school until about 1990s, late 80s, 90s, the restriction was taken off. It's important to note that this land was not acquired as part of the Walker Woods open spaces, it's a separate parcel. It's a very nice parcel, but there are some issues in terms of its proximity to the aquifer, and it's certainly not in the center of Town. When you start talking to some of the seniors, though, you get quite a variety of opinions about the pros and cons of that. I'll quickly run through the boards for you. As I said, there's going to be a lot more to the process, but trying to get a lot of input early on in this process.
This is the first time I've seen it referred to as a community senior center, as opposed to just a senior center. Is that an issue?
No, I think that that became obvious as we went through it. Eno right now is a senior community center, and those uses would expect to be continued. This is the Eno Memorial site. The existing building is in the darker red brown. The proposal would be to create a drop-off canopyed space off of Station Street, along with making Station Street two-way, as recommended in the center area charrette, putting an entry foyer public space on the north side, and then two additions in the back, which then link into a parking deck.
And that gray is, that is a parking deck?
Yes. Now, the lower level would be from Railroad Street, with an entrance to the lower level with stairs and elevators. And the upper deck would basically be as is right now, coming off of Station Street. It is important to note that this is a deck. A lot of people are apprehensive about parking garages, or totally subterranean parking facilities. This would be completely open on the Railroad Street side and partially open on the Station Street side. There's also been some discussion in the center business community of perhaps extending this with a joint venture onto property of the south. And I've also looked into the possibility of extending it further east. If anybody wants to look at one of these decks, there's a very interesting one at TD Bank in Glastonbury. It's very nicely done. But this particular configuration for a deck is a little bit inefficient. It's long, and it has two big rows, and if you don't link the upper and lower decks to somewhere, you end up with a dead end. So even though you're, this is the lower deck, so if folks come in here, you know, they somehow have to turn around at the end to go out, whereas most parking decks and garages, you have a circular pattern. If we were a little bit deeper, we could in fact get that circular pattern. And on the lower level, you could then have an exit and an entrance to park north-south.
Would you get the same result if you could extend it in front of?
If we went south, we had Wilcox Street, yeah, you'd have the same. But it's kind of an interesting opportunity, because the terrain is such as a substantial drop-off and get a nice entrance from both levels.
Do you have any, before you leave that one, do you have any information on the Main Street grant?
We are supposed to hear about that grant.
Right.
This month.
That's for the parking deck?
That is a half-million-dollar grant to put towards that structure.
Right, toward the deck. That wasn't factored into your numbers here?
No, it is not. No, I'm down in the main meeting room. Come on down, I can talk to you in a minute.
That, are you going to show more of the floor plan on this?
Yeah. This is the lower level. So this entrance would be off of the Station Street side. And you'd have a lower entrance with stairways and elevators. And basically, SCTV would be relocated to a black box type studio, which they like. They really don't like windows. They've got their offices, their studios, entrance in and out for their equipment easily. All our mechanicals would stay down there as is. This is the present level where they have their dinners and so forth. We would have an entrance to this level, as well as a drop-off area from Station Street. We completely, we would return all of that lower level where SCTV is to the dining area, which traditionally it has been, as well as having the provisions to divide that room up for multipurpose uses. Put a new kitchen in, and then have activity rooms and our whole administrative offices. And then on the south side, have a patio, kind of a nice outdoor feature. And then this entry area off of Station would have a lobby area, a little cafe, which is a big feature in virtually all of the senior centers we looked at. Front area, the two large rooms would remain for senior community uses, arts and crafts, activity classroom area. The present auditorium main floor. Again, we have the elevators and the access up, and of course, the existing elevator. And again, the auditorium would be left alone, all of your public spaces, your rotunda, DAR room would remain. And of course, the present senior center room is a very nice room. And that would kind of be returned to a big open area rather than being divided up between an activity area and offices. Take all the offices out of there. And then we have a fitness room, which is a major feature in most community centers, and an exercise activity room. One of the things we haven't put in here in a big way is computer training and use. That is a big feature in a lot of the facilities, but our library is very strong in the opportunities for computer training and use, so we felt that that could continue on at the library. And then the upper level is really untouched. And again, look at the upper stage, the balcony, and the public, the north conference room, the south conference room. They're in a nice, nice architectural style. We leave those alone. As far as the elevation goes, this is looking from Station Street and the existing building. This would be the drop-off area, which would be a glassed wall. This kind of looks curved, but that's not really true. That's just the way the graphics come out. And you would be able to see through to the existing wall with the big windows. It'd be kind of like an atrium space. And then this would be the addition in the back, and then the parking deck. The parking deck needs work on, and I don't want anybody to think that deck design is well-worn. But we did have Desmond Associates do the study, so it is quite doable. They're kind of the foremost parking deck people. But there's a lot of details that have to go into that yet.
The one nice solution here, I think, or one of the nice solutions, is the dilemma, how do you get from east to west? Or vice versa, you know, from the deck through the entire building. And I think that idea looked like there was a corridor on the auditorium level.
Atrium area provides the through corridor, which is very nice. It's kind of a spectacular space.
And you could actually see through the building at the terrace beyond, I assume, like that elevation.
And that would preserve your whole interior wall. And this provides that big connectivity to the addition in the back, the elevator bank, the connectivity to the front with the elevators in the front.
Right.
Really opens it up. One of the big problems I've always found in Eno with the elevator area, it's like really very congested. And of course, the elevators are retrofitted. It's amazing they fit them in. This really opens it up a lot more friendly an area, a lot more light. The other site we looked at was Bushy Stratton. And I do want to say on behalf of the architect that he went way beyond what he was originally trained for. I think people do that, architects, right? He wasn't supposed to be doing a building plan, but, I mean, his main thrust was program planning, space requirements to meet those program plans, the demographics, the space to meet the population. He did go ahead and put together kind of a schematic plan. And I really stress that, because if people start to look at this, oh, maybe we should move this five feet. That's not where we're at. This is a demonstration of space to accommodate the programs and the needs.
Rich, what is the square footage of the program?
It's about twenty-two thousand five hundred now. So this is north. This is, what's the county? This is Powder Forest Homes East, Billings Gate. So we are on the corner. We do stay top of the hill. I mentioned before, we didn't want to get over that hill to get into the up gradient area from those well fields. So all this does drain towards Bushy and Stratton. There's public water. The sewer's quite a ways away, though. They have to run a line in here. We do have natural gas. It's all on grade parking. It's a one-story building. You get into some interesting discussions about that. It's very interesting that you can kind of trick some people into thinking about a one-story or two-story building. It's, Agawam was actually quite interesting. A lot of people think that's a one-story building. It's a two-story building, but it has very distinct grade elevations. So if your activity is on that main floor, you pull in front and park, well, it looks like it's one floor. If your activities are downstairs, you go in a whole lower parking and walk in, and it seems like it's one floor. But you get some people that, you know, they want the parking all on one level, and they want one floor. But if you start parking out here, and your activity is over here, and you can walk. So I see some advantages in two stories.
Question. Obviously, you're talking about the parking here. Obviously, you've got a whole bunch more parking spaces than you have at Eno.
We do indeed.
Why is that? Was that just because it's a rendering, or?
No, I mean, we have the rule. Eno basically has to fit the parking on that deck. The two levels, we can maybe get a hundred cars, but we can get a lot more parking out here. Of course, you're seeing it spread out a lot more too, because it's not decked.
Well, I understand that.
But yeah.
Am I correct in looking at that saying, there's many more spaces in that parking lot?
It's all double.
Park? All right.
Double, yep.
I want to go back to Eno for a minute. If we're looking, I really liked it in Eno. I think that, to me, that is number one. Are we dealing with a potential parking problem at Eno? Based on your studies, or based on these studies?
I think Eno works very well for the vast majority of the programs. But there would be some issues as there is right now when you have really large programs. Now, whether those really large programs are senior programs or community programs, it's a little unclear. But the parking is, always falls into the classic dilemma, though. Are we going to build a hundred percent parking for the hundred percent maximum day? Usually, you don't. If you had some huge event here and did not have enough parking, well, it'd be tough luck, there would be no parking. At Eno, you've got plenty of spaces on-street, and you have plenty of places in the Iron Horse Boulevard lots. Right now, the Iron Horse Boulevard lots are very difficult to access because you have to go up that steep hill. If we have a lower deck, then you can come in on grade, and you don't have to navigate hills. And the other point about Eno is on-street parking as well as the Iron Horse Boulevard lots. And when you talk about walking, well, it quite honestly is not a lot different than if you had a parking, a summer space, or an activity over here than if you parked on Hoppin Middle Street and walked across the street.
It's perception.
Again, you know, I really caution, it's all pretty schematic, demonstrate how the spaces would be met. It's one floor. A lot of similar features, though, the entrance, entrance, open area with a little cafe, seating areas. We have our program rooms, exercise rooms, and again, the multipurpose room with the kitchens. And again, all the different features, arts and crafts, exercise rooms. This one does have a small library, and that's, if you've been in the larger senior centers, those are just very small, relaxing libraries. Be a library in the normal sense of the word. Large bathroom facility, smaller bathrooms in the corners. And then I always hate to show this one, because, you know, it's a quick concept plan. So I don't want anybody to love it or hate it, because, you know, it's nowhere near that stage of design. But that's kind of an idea of a rendering of how a building is depicted on that floor plan should look.
This is going to be way off the left field. As we look at the seniors, has anyone thought in the town of combining senior center and the youth center?
We had not.
Pardon?
That was not considered, although, Eno does get a good number of youth programs in there on the community.
Because there's a place that I go, it's a hockey rink, really, on the Cape, that has seniors on one side, hockey rinks in the middle.
I know where that is.
Yeah, and the youth on the other side, and it just works great.
We did, we did take a look at the library site. And some people think that that's an easy solution, but Simsbury Library is a library. To fit other activities in there would require some major revamping. But the biggest drawback on the library site is no parking. And even though when you look at that site, it looks like there's all sorts of room. And you could put, in my opinion, a very elegant building across the stream with a Passover connector from the library going to the building, there's no parking, because you end up right against the Congregational Church property and Belt and Forest. So parking is already an issue down there, so that site was rejected for that reason.
Has there been any conversations with the neighbors to the south of Eno about the garage?
There have been.
Okay.
Yeah, the Main Street program has spearheaded that a little bit, and we've had some good conversations.
Because that would solve a lot of the parking problems, I think.
And there are some unique ways of running parking garage in terms of shared time usage with pass fobs or pass cards, where certain hours would be restricted to seniors, and then the rest of the day, everybody could get in. So pretty interesting ways to run garages. So that's where we're at.
Thanks.
And so a lot of opportunities to...
Question? How large is Andy's, this store, roughly, square footage?
I don't know that answer, but believe it or not, do you know that?
It's probably eighteen or twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's about twenty-five thousand.
You have a major building in the middle of town, parking, why wasn't that considered?
We did take a look at it, and unless the other tenants got out of there, it actually, at times of the day, does not have much parking available. And our opinion was that that building, that is a very old building.
It's also on a tax rolls, see?
That was another one of our criteria that we weren't supposed to pull crockery.
Yeah, it wasn't, it had to be.
We didn't, we didn't get into it a lot, because, well, the one limiting factor was keeping private property.
You can understand, it's a logical question for somebody who drives by.
There was quite a bit of discussion held about it. Some contacts were actually made. But there were some discussions about leaseback or the owner with limitations, but not a lot of support for that. Leaseback is an interesting concept. Get out there twenty years, what do you have? So we did not pursue that.
Has anybody, has anybody looked at what folks use Eno or senior center now and other situations in town at the same time? And what I'm saying is, here we are, looking at Eno as a center. The library's here, shopping is here, restaurants are here. Are we looking at that kind of synergy?
That was, you know, exactly the reason we concentrated on Eno. There was good synergies. People could park, they could walk to the library, walk to the restaurants. They're all pretty easy to walk.
To me, that puts many points ahead.
And in terms of space, like I mentioned before, the whole computer data operations piece, whether it be training or use, we did in fact leave it to the library.
Right. It is, it's very a strong argument to keep it in town, keep it where it is.
I like your rendering, because Eno itself is intact. You know, if you go down Main Street.
Right.
It's the same old Eno.
I will, I will caution some folks. There are a few people that, you know, that everything's perfect just the way it is. Put some paint on it. That if you're going to respect the historical... That, if you're going to respect the historic fabric of that building, you really can't do that. And not offer the type of activities we saw for community use and senior use in the other towns. And, and to some extent, cost-wise, it's easier to put an addition on the back, because Eno, as I probably said this before, is nowhere old, as some people think it is. It was built in the 1930s. But it had a lot of forward-looking concepts, which have a lot of pluses to them, such as utility tunnels and very strong construction. But it is a very difficult, expensive building to work in, because if you're not going to access utility tunnels, cables, wires, heat, air conditioning, the building is virtually solid masonry. Quite the challenge. We did two major projects in there, the air conditioning and the auditorium, which in that case worked out great. I, you guys probably know this, but that is a hung plaster ceiling with catwalks. We were able to sneak right up there and drop all the air conditioning in. The sprinklers, not so fun. We worked it out, but it was quite expensive. And if you want to run a telephone right down there and keep it hidden, very expensive, unless it's going to come up right under those utility tunnels. So a lot of pluses to do this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Very good. In July, you say, you're going to make a decision.
I hope, yeah, we hope to do a presentation. Well, my thing is, we hope to do a presentation through the next month, and then do a public presentation and get some input.
Okay.
And then I am asking for 60% design development money at the next budget cycle, and since all those cost estimates came out quite close, and that would apply pretty much at the end of the projects, whatever cycle is around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Comment on record, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As I'm sure you all know, I look at renovations, and have done for many, many years. This one of an iconic building is excellent.
Yeah, yeah, very sensitive, I think. And I think clearly, all the new work will be different from the old, which is what you're supposed to do anyway with this restoration. Two things I wanted to touch on before we. One is the, I listened to some of that zoning commission meeting on the television, and I don't want to have a wide discussion on that, but I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at that, but the, apparently, the three selected on the zoning commission meeting, Chairman Pomeroy, Commissioners Ryan and Povich, have already started, they've met together apparently, and are coming up with their, their ideas and directives, and they, at some appropriate time in the future, they're going to pass it down to Design Review to let us know what's happening. But the long and the short of it is, I guess by, they're looking for names by August 15th, roughly mid-August, for members on the Design Review Board. The nominations will come out of the two political parties, the nominating committees, approved by the town committees. A series of names gets passed on to the zoning commission. They will deliberate, interview, if they choose, candidates, and then make their selection of six regular members and up to three alternates. They want to do that by mid-October, roughly before the election. During the process of, one of the comments that came out was, they, they are considering now what Design Review should do in terms of what projects they ought to look at. So I think they're apparently going to make some statements about that. I mean, I, I was naive in thinking that we were going to collaborate, I guess, but maybe we will in the future, I don't know. But they seem to be meeting and deciding and moving things along. And I, one thing they did ask, Hiram, I think, at the end of the meeting, was to put together some qualifications that they might want to think about.
Yeah, I have, and I told you all earlier, I haven't really done a thing on that. It's just that I think they're looking at some sort of framework to say, you know, how do, how do we look for members, and how do we do this? They want some sort of, something that they can give to people, say, here, here's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Some sort of experience or interest or whatever it happens to be, so.
Yeah, I, so I, what they did say is what, current sitting members will be given strong consideration, I think were the words that they, they used, or something like that. Anyway, I think each one of us has to decide whether those, those conditions are still what.
When will, when will we get a, perhaps a little more definition on what those conditions are?
I don't know what their schedule is, I don't know.
Probably within two weeks.
Okay, all right, okay.
They want to, they don't want to, you know, wait till the last minute or anything. It's my understanding that probably within two weeks.
Very good.
One of the interesting things about that conversation is that Mr. Pomeroy identified us as a permanent board. I think that may be the town attorney's influence, or not influence, but he, they had a talk about the term, there's going to be a four-year term, if you haven't seen it. And Mr. Pomeroy and others on the zoning commission, I think, wants a staggered term, at least in the beginning. I'm not sure that's entirely resolved yet, but it sounds to me like our attorney has interpreted the charter to mean that we are now a permanent board. You can't have a temporary board and have a four-year term.
Well, we're not, we're not temporary anymore. It's part of the charter. It's part of the charter.
At least we've gotten that far.
Right, yeah, so I.
I thought, you know, it was interesting. I found one very positive thing at the very end, and I don't know who the member was, he was the one that was sitting very, at the very end, came in late.
Out of the picture?
Yeah, or not out of the picture, but. He made the comment about, we have to find some way to get, get track of or hold the urban legends that come through here. And I think that has been our main problem with the zoning board, the urban legends, you know, a, either a developer or a young inexperienced builder comes in and says, we decided to have a paving patio, we decided to do all this, when most of the time, we said, you know, we'll prove it to what it is, but boy, it would be nice if, better for you, less expensive. And by the time it gets to them, they get this legend. And that's what, I think, to me, started the whole thing.
Yeah.
I think the other, the other comment on that same vein was the, you know, we want to have people not have to come, you know, three or four times in a row.
Right, yeah.
What it was said was, most of the time, that's the fault of.
Yeah.
The applicant.
Yeah, I don't know whether you would ever say anything, Hiram, in that regard, you know, that, because I was trying to think, the only, Dorset Crossing was the only time I think we had someone come back four times or so. That was informal, that was his choice, not our recommendation. But, you know, that, to me, is the only project that, that had multiple return visits.
Well, Riverview did too.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And Riverview, to me, I was thinking Riverview, you know, if we only had one shot at it.
Yeah.
It would have been an ugly building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have to wrap up with the, with the planning commission out there. I just, one other thing, but let's get the approval of the minutes of February 26, 2013?
Line 60.
Line 60, yes.
Yeah, you did not recuse yourself.
Right, if you change my name to.
Draplick.
Draplick. Line 60, then you got it.
Point, Charlie. Line 196, this is just a matter of making it read as, as I think it was intended. It says, Home Goods Deliberations, they proceeded, if you would scratch the word "they" and put in "the applicant." So it would read, Home Goods Deliberations, the applicant, with what "they," and then insert "originally proposed." And then scratch the word "with" and put in "and the zoning board approved," so that it would read, he said, he said, following Home Goods Deliberations, the applicant, he said, following Home Goods, it still doesn't read, but, following Home Goods Deliberations, the applicant proceeded with what they originally proposed, and the zoning board approved, period. The only, and then line 202, it currently reads, a bearing to recognize the extenuating circumstances, I think reads, the intent is better said, if it's a bearing, a bearing, the DRB should recognize the extenuating circumstances. So that he said, it would, the whole sentence would be, he added, in a case where there are special circumstances that have a bearing, the DRB should recognize the extenuating circumstances.
Thank you. Okay, with those corrections, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion by Tony Draplick, second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Last item, I, Bill wanted to make an announcement before we adjourn, so.
Yeah, I, I've been on this board a long time, and it's finally caught up with me. You may, you may remember going way back in time, there was another gentleman on the, on the Design Review Board, I've forgotten his name, and his eyesight went to hell in a handbasket. And so did mine, so has mine. I, at the point, I'm at the point in my life where I can't read a newspaper, I can't read a piece of paper like this. And that's the reason why my wife, Babs, is always with me whenever I'm around doing anything, it's because she drives the car, because I can't drive. I can't see, I can't see, well, I can see, but to read this piece of paper is hell on wheels, to try and figure out what it says and what it means. So as a result of that, I am resigning from Design Review Board, because I can't function in a rational way. So it's been a very enjoyable time to be with all of you. We go, we go back together collectively a long way, and it's been very enjoyable, and I hope you've been able to put up with me and put up with Babs, who has been my chauffeur and my eyes for quite some time. So, thank you very much, it's been enjoyable.
Well, thank you, well, yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I want to just say, you know, you have been a longtime member, almost as, maybe as long as I have, or maybe longer, I'm not sure, but.
Somewhere in there.
It's somewhere in there, but it's been a pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
I, I found all your comments to be right on target and, and very, very helpful in all of our meetings, and it's been a pleasure. From my standpoint, and I think this group, I think, is working very well together on all the projects. Don't always agree on everything, but we, we wind up in the end to still like each other, I think, so.
That's important.
Bill, you're part of the, you're part of that too, you've been a big part, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Indeed.
And good luck in your road ahead.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
You too.
Yes, best. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Bill, do you want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
The last second.
The last second. We are adjourned, thank you very much for coming.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.